Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for January. Mr. Gentili, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Wechler? Here. Would you all please rise for the opening prayer. It's going to be offered this evening by Bridget McCormick from Temple Lutheran Church. You can come up to the microphone.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together tonight in this community safely on this wintry night. Thank you for the commissioners in this room who work hard to bring our community together, to speak for the voices within this room and outside of this room. Lord, give them open hearts and open minds tonight to discuss the agenda that they have before them. Give them the support that they need within this room and outside of this room to make the tough decisions that they need to make and that they have to make on a daily basis. And give us the ability to hear one another as we discuss what we're going to discuss today in this room. Lord, thank you for our Public Works Department, who's been working tirelessly to keep our town safe, our Police Department, who keeps us safe, and all of the workers that keep Havertown running, as it should. Lord, thank you for the people that are in this community that make Havertown a warm and welcoming community, that reaches out to the other communities around us, and serves those not only within our community but outside of Havertown. Lord, I pray that you will be with us tonight as we discuss, we listen, and we move forward with plans for new and better things. We thank you for your presence with us, and we hope that you will continue to bless this community as you have in the past. In your name, amen.
Thank you very much. Before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask everybody to take a moment of silence for Lieutenant Mathieu Toino from Springfield and the Philadelphia Police Department. He was a friend of all five departments of this township, an instructor, a graduate of Cardinal Howard High School, member of Holy Cross Parish in Springfield. Thank you very much. Chief?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we start two announcements, we had a brief executive session on a personnel issue prior to this meeting. Also, the proclamation in memory of Ms. Gaspereau will be postponed until next month because of the weather. Her family did not want to travel this evening. The other thing I'll announce, too, is on the agenda, there's some certain things about the committee, and I think Gloria typed in one resolution for the Grange. That's not locked in concrete. I think any voting event that comes out will come out of our discussion. I think she was listening to the tapes and may got confused. We wanted to do something for one or two of the committees, so when we have our discussion, feel free that the Grange issue is not locked in concrete.
The Grange issue.
What was it?
No, I mean about adding people. The Grange.
With the Grange, we weren't going to add. I think.
No, we wanted to look at terms.
Extending.
Right, that's why what Gloria put on the agenda is not correct. We talked.
Oh, okay.
So, we haven't had our discussion for her to put anything on, you know, informal air. So, based upon our discussion, we can make the new business. We can adjust those either if we have to do either a resolution or an ordinance.
Yeah, could I?
Sure.
I mean, I thought it had to be an ordinance myself when I was reviewing the agenda tonight. I think the charter requires all of our ordinance. This was established by an ordinance, so I think to change the ordinance, you have to do it by ordinance.
The Grange ordinance only established our recognition of the Grange as a separate corporation that we support, et cetera. It did not establish any committees, appointments, et cetera. As a result, when I looked at it and made the initial draft, unlike the committees that are in the chart, in the code, the Grange was not. So therefore, I presumed that it's an ad hoc committee that we appoint, but it's not in the code that we anything about our appointments or anything with the Grange Committee. And since it wasn't there, and I could find no history of an ordinance doing it, I presumed it was one of the ad hoc committees, which we can do by.
Yeah, and I don't fault that reasoning, but I do think that, like a lot of things, and not just this township and any township, things were established years ago, and whether they were done right the first time, we're not sure. But it would seem to me to clean things up now. Probably makes more sense to do it by ordinance now.
Okay, thanks. So, we're into item three already, the discussion of any possible increase in members for any of the following boards and commissions, which are listed on your agenda: Health, Ice Rink, Parks, and Rec, Friends of the Grange, or Shade Tree Commission. So, if there's anybody that has any comment, please speak up.
So, Bill, if we could, could we just go through each?
Sure.
And so, Health Advisory.
Did we do the Citizens Forum?
We have seven now, right? We're thinking about going to nine.
No, that's for the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, this is.
I think the purpose of the seven was to do it by ward, but that's not the way it's done as far as the committee right now.
I'm just wondering whether we want to go by not to nine now. I don't think.
I don't think there's a need.
I don't think you want to make it ward-specific.
We need to make it ward-specific, but there might be some committees. I think we specifically talked about the Ice Rink Advisory Committee, where we felt we had a lot of volunteers with expertise, and that the possibility of increasing the number of members on that advisory board might be a good idea. I think that's how the discussion came up.
And Parks.
And Parks is the same way.
Yeah. And Shade Tree, really.
Shade Tree.
Yeah, those three is what.
We had a lot of interest.
You're right, Health. Right, so there was four out of these. The only thing was the Friends of the Grange.
And those four are all.
Sure, let's start off with the Health, and any suggestions there would be.
So, we're at seven, and the suggestion would be go to nine. So, I would be supportive of that, given we had a lot of people that were interested, a lot of talent to draw from. So, I don't know how everybody else feels. I wouldn't go bigger, larger than nine, but I think nine's.
No, and the rest of them are seven, am I correct?
Seven for Parks and Rec. Ice skating is seven, I think.
Seven.
Shade Tree is, I'm not sure about. Human Relations, I think, is seven. But why don't we? I don't know.
Well, I think Human Relations is different. That's set by ordinance. It has its own ordinance.
If I may.
Yeah, go, Mr. Siegel.
If you look at the township code, all of the ones listed, Health, Ice Rink, Parks, and Shade Tree, exclusive of the Grange, which we talked about, are specifically in the code as seven members each. What I did in drafting what's listed as ordinance P-4 2018 was increase those to nine as per what I thought was the sense of the board. But all of those, those happen to be the four committees that are specifically enumerated in our code.
I think Shade Tree has five.
Yeah, Shade Tree has five, Cable has four.
Five to nine, are we talking about going to five?
Human Relations, seven.
Whatever the board wants, but they're all specifically in the code. If you look at the code online, you'll see that those are enumerated. None of our other boards that we appoint, you know, are listed there. So, all I did was amend the paragraph that said the number of members, and left all the other sections alone, because we weren't touching any of that.
One of the things they were talking about was increasing the stadium, and the stadium already has nine.
It has seven.
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 It says seven in the code.
And we had trouble. I mean, we didn't have as many people apply for that particular board. I think we had to re-advertise, did we not?
No, we had.
Cable.
That was for Cable. I think the issue we have with Ice Rink is one sitting member did not reapply. She missed the reappointment. And so, we ended up appointing the gentleman from Haverford College last week.
Right, so.
The intent was to increase it so she could come back onto the board.
Barbara Lazio is not on the board right now. We'd like to add her, so I'd like to add two more positions to that board, if that is possible.
Okay, so we're talking about going from five to nine on Health Advisory, from seven to nine on Ice Skating Rink?
Seven to nine.
We're talking to seven to nine on Parks and Rec, and we're talking from five to nine, or five to seven on Shade Tree Commission?
I would say five to seven.
Yeah, do we need, are we going to go five to nine on Health? Do we need to?
I thought Health is.
Health already.
I thought Health is seven. Health is seven, I believe.
Seven now.
So, we've got a nine. Do we have a directory of everybody who's on it, who's on them already?
I can give you that.
We'd have the first reading.
Now, are we talking about passing this tonight?
There is a tentative ordinance that Mr. Siegel and the Ordinance Committee drafted up for the regular meeting after we get through the reorganization.
Don't we have, so we have to invite public comment?
We will do that when we get to that portion of the meeting. Yes.
The Health Advisory Board is seven right now.
Okay, so we want to increase that to nine.
Are we voting on that, or no?
Well, that would be in the regular meeting.
So, Dan, your resolution increases basically Health Advisory, Ice Rink, Parks and Rec, Shade Tree Commission, and Human Relations.
Not Human Relations. Not Human Relations.
Not, so that would stay at seven.
That's constituted by an ordinance, so we can't.
That's by a separate ordinance, and I didn't want to go there with that.
Okay.
And I also didn't, no, I don't think there's any state law issue with that, but I didn't look at that, because I wanted to, because of the time of one week, I wanted to get the, what I'll call, the easier ones done.
So, Dan, we could go to nine with Human Relations at a?
We would have to, that would have to be an ordinance, and I don't know, and I don't know that Jim knows.
Yeah, I don't know, they're off the top of my head. We could take a look at the legislation.
And I don't know either. I'm not sure whether the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act limits local commissions to a certain number.
That's what I didn't.
Also, I'm not so sure that's a commission that needs to be expanded. I mean, their charge is highly specialized, and I don't think it's the same as having, you know, trying to get a larger group of advisors on our ice rink, you know, between hockey and figure skating and everything else. That's a, that's a commission I don't think we need to change. We do have excellent people going for it, but it's not my recommendation that we change the Human Relations Commission.
Okay, it sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement for those four.
Yeah.
Seven to nine for the three, and five to seven for the Shade Tree.
Yes.
So, we'll invite public comment after we get through the reorganization portion of tonight's agenda. Item four is appointments.
Well, wait, do we want to discuss Friends of the Grange?
We can do that in the discussion.
Well, I mean, it's the same discussion. I mean, the issue was whether we wanted to add to their term, because it's currently a one-year term, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to make it like a four-year term for the.
People are on the Friends of the Grange.
Three.
Three.
You've got to realize their executive board only has like five members, so you don't want to exceed that to go over the executive board. So, the whole idea was the three members that are on there now, Connor Quinn and Mr. Harding, and Chad Brooks would be four-year terms, or even a three-year term, whatever you decide on. But it's better than coming back every year for a one-year term.
Yeah, I would suggest that, well, can somebody articulate for me? So, the Grange has its own board, and then the Friends of the Grange are what?
Okay, it's not clear in the township code that we ever have had a formal committee recognize the way we have the others. It could have been an ad hoc committee. That's the only, that's the only thing I could take from not finding anything specific in the code. The resolution that I've drafted, which presumably is almost in the form, and I'd ask Mr. Byrne to check, but I think it's basically in the form that could be turned into a proposed ordinance, increased it to nine. We can change that number, and since there was a discussion, but we never really talked about the length, I just changed it to two, because I agree one-year terms don't make any sense for something like that. And then I put in provisions about how we would increase the numbers, because we would have more appointments if you have two-year terms. I didn't think we wanted necessarily everyone rotating off at the same time, so I was trying to rotate them in odd and even years, so that you have some continuation of membership.
I would stick with, I would go with three years and three members, and just in the very first year, somebody gets a one-year term, somebody gets a two-year term, somebody gets a three-year term, and the one-year term, the following year is a three-year term, and the two-year term, the following year is a three-year term, at which point never more than one will cycle off, so you'll never have upheaval unless people resign. We do the same thing with five-year terms on five-member boards, like the zoning board.
I think that's a plan.
But, I mean, we might as well, I mean, now's the time to articulate what it is the Friends of the Grange do, and.
Well, that's in the.
Formalize it.
That's in the code. What was never in the code, and that's in the code at section four, Part VII, Friends of the Grange is, it's title, it's chapter four, Part VII, and Article 27, as I look at Roman numerals. So, that's already in the code. It just never formally listed or spelled out the, how many people we were appointing as our committee, and under what terms.
So, your ordinance amends that code?
It was a, I prepared a resolution, since the others did not, since it didn't appear to come from ordinance, but we could turn that into an ordinance to amend it any way the board wants.
Okay. I think that's the way to go, amend the.
Yeah, just change it to the three, and change, basically.
Yeah.
And, you know what, if you think about it, we just appointed the three individuals for the next year. It's not urgent to do that. I think you could start off with January of next year, the three, the two, the one, next year. I mean, there's nothing, they've already been appointed.
That would be fine.
So, we're no, I really don't see an urgency for the Grange right at this moment, so.
Mr. President, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Yeah, I had to go into the code to find out how many members served on these boards and committees, and actually understand what they do. I think we ought to pull that out of the code and have a separate section in the web page where, so residents that are interested in knowing which, what each board and commission does, what their mission statement is, who's on the board, what the terms are. So, when they apply for these positions, they know what they are, they don't have to go to the code to find it. So, I don't know whether Larry, we'll work on something like that over the next year or two. It should be broken out, so people.
We can just take it right out and make a subsection.
Yeah, maybe ask the committees to work up a mission statement or something, and explain what they do, so when people are interested, they can have a better understanding of what each board and commission actually does, rather than trying to find in the code.
Yeah, what the terms are is important.
It's not very clear. It's hard to figure out.
It's definitely hard to find on that website, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's very hard to find. You've got to search.
Yep.
Yeah, so I don't know, Larry, maybe over the next, I don't know.
No, I don't think it will take that long.
You can chip away at it.
The good news is, the ear that needs to hear that is here this evening, because she's running the TV camera.
Sorry.
So, anyway, that's good, our social media expert is actually filming for us this evening, so. Okay, any other comments on that section before we move on? Okay, item four, appointments.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, so I see we, I wasn't here, so unfortunately, I'm not sure why, I don't really understand why we had public notice of advertising for a number of positions when we had.
I think the.
Candidates that were already, had more than enough candidates. For example, under Human Relations Commission, we had six candidates. We filled two positions. I know we needed one on cable TV. Advisory, Ice Skating Rink, I didn't think we needed anybody. RHM, I think we had three candidates, one withdrew. So, I'm really unclear about why there was a re-advertising, and who authorized it.
I think the Township Manager, when there were items that were tied, the general thinking, I think, Mr. Byrne, you said it was appropriate that we re-advertise, reopen, tie or not filled?
Well, not filled, it's that simple.
Yeah, I think what, I think.
Not filled is what, yeah.
I think really what I had said was that I didn't think there was anything against that. I mean, and we talked about the policy considerations that you all had with respect to the new regulation that you had put in place last year concerning dates and dates for submissions, and what needed to be submitted. And then I think the conversation went into, you know, that was not really part of the regulation as to what happens if there's a tie, can it then open back up? And I think I said, well, there's nothing to prohibit it from opening it back up, but it's a policy decision that you all have to make, that if.
Was that was decided by the board to reopen it up? Because I would think if it's tabled, it should be, the existing pool should be the existing pool. It should not.
Yeah, the only one where there was an issue, there were two positions that there was not a majority electing them. That was the Human Relations last position, the unexpired three-year term, and the RHM five-year term.
Yeah, but again.
Vacancy Committee, there was no candidate.
We had candidates, and we advertised properly, and we had enough candidates, there's no reason to re-advertise and open it up.
And for that reason, we didn't.
Nobody nominated those other candidates. Nobody nominated those other candidates. The only people who got any votes are the people that were nominated.
Nominated for vote, but there were candidates on the list that are now, can be reconsidered, obviously.
If we get through our reorganization meeting, and the board doesn't fill a slot, then that slot is open. I mean, that was the thinking of people who were here at the board, whether it was a four-four vote, or a three, a one, and a two, or whatever it turned out to be, or three, three, and two.
That wasn't my understanding, when.
It may not have been your understanding, but we didn't allow, I mean, let's go straight to it. Civil Service Commission, it was a civil service solicitor, a four-four vote. When the thing was over, there was nobody appointed to that position. That position is open. Yeah, but we still have, you hadn't had my vote, and you had two applicants. You had two applicants that applied on time, per our regulations. Right, and those applicants aren't out now. There's no issue with those applicants still being considered. There's no reason to add anybody new. But nobody's been added. When I was coming back. I mean, I would suggest, Andy, that we not have a fight over something we don't need to have a fight over yet. Nobody's been nominated to these positions yet. We're about to. I think it's the right way to do it.
Well, let me make, let me make a comment. I did not, even though they went out, we did an interview again. So, we had plenty of candidates. If you look at the Human Relations was one, there's three or four, there was like five candidates. Only three were nominated that night. So, we didn't interview anymore. So, there's none being considered, because it was kind of a gray area. I didn't want to schedule interviews, not knowing, since we had enough candidates for all the positions. We did re-advertise for the Vacancy Committee, the Vacancy Property Review Committee, and Cable, but then we did have, yeah, Cable, because we were one short there. So, we haven't, we haven't done anything. And then the other vacancies are just the appointments of senior service, senior citizens. So, first item is the Civil Service Solicitor, somebody wants to put forth a nomination.
Mr. President, I'll make.
Nominate Kevin O'Neill.
Second.
Mr. O'Neill is nominated and seconded. Any other nominations? Mr. McCloskey?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sean Kilkenny to serve as Township Haverford's Civil Service Solicitor.
Sean Kilkenny is nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. There a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion closed and seconded. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Mr. Gentili, please call the roll for the Civil Service Solicitor.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Oliva?
Mr. O'Neill.
McCloskey?
Sean Kilkenny.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Kilkenny.
Mr. Lewis?
Kevin O'Neill.
McGarrett?
Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Hart?
Sean Kilkenny.
Mr. Holmes?
Attorney Kilkenny.
And Mr. Wechler?
Mr. O'Neill. Five-four, Mr. O'Neill. Congratulations, Mr. O'Neill. Next appointment is for a Cable Advisory Board position, four-year term. Are there any nominations?
I've moved the table. I don't believe we have anyone yet.
I have not received any additional nominations.
Haven't heard of anyone.
There's a motion to table the Cable Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Human Relations Commission, unexpired three-year term.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move to nominate Sarah McCaffrey for a position on the Human Relations Commission. Thanks, Dan.
Second for Ms. McCaffrey. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Brooke Huff.
Brooke Huff?
Second that.
Second it. Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Hannah Turlish.
Ms. Turlish. Second for Ms. Turlish. That's three nominations. Any others? Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Is there a second? Is there a second to close the nominations?
Second.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Ms. Huff.
Mr. Oliva?
Ms. Huff.
Mr. McCloskey?
Ms. Turlish.
Mr. Siegel?
Ms. Turlish.
Mr. Lewis?
Huff, Ms. Huff.
Mr. McGarrett?
Ms. Huff.
Mr. Hart?
Ms. Turlish.
Mr. Holmes?
Ms. McCaffrey.
And Mr. Wechler?
Ms. Huff. Congratulations, Ms. Huff. Next appointment is the RHM Sewer Authority, five-year term.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Graham Lee to serve on the RHM Sewer Authority for a five-year term to expire December 31, 2022.
Second.
Motion made to second it. Other nominations? Motion to close?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Graham Lee.
McCloskey?
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lewis?
Graham Lee.
Mr. McGarrett?
Graham Lee.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Lee.
And Mr. Wexler?
Dr. Graham Lee. Congratulations, Dr. Graham Lee. Vacancy Committee, one-year term.
Is there any? I don't think we have any other candidates.
Yeah, why don't we table this? Motion to table. Second.
Go ahead.
Now, it's the next one, I'm sorry.
All right. All in favor of tabling Vacancy Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
That's tabled. Vacancy Property Committee, Review Committee, five-year term.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, so, we had Pat Killian on there, and I thought there was a requirement that there be somebody from the county, or is that not true? Why is Pat Killian, because he's the county, I know he's a Haverford County resident, but.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I'll have to check this.
So, there's nothing, there's no requirement?
I don't know. I mean, I can check for you, but I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know why he would have picked him as, he's the executive director of the Commerce Department, so.
But, and, but he's also a resident.
Yeah, he's a resident, but I just, I'm just curious as to why.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we can check and see.
I, I believe he was just on as a resident, is my recollection.
It could wa, you're probably right.
There's, there's two members of that. There's a commissioner from this board.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Holmes was appointed to that last week.
That's why I thought there was.
And then there's a resident.
Oh, red, has to be red.
He was a resident of the.
Second one is a resident of the township.
I see, okay, then.
There's two members of that.
That makes sense.
It's got, it's here, isn't it? It's in our, it's in our code, isn't it?
Yeah, it should be in the code.
Anyone know where?
There's Lori when you need her. She's got it memorized.
It's very good.
That's why we gotta bring it out, put a little front cover of the webpage.
Yeah, it's, let me just, I'll pull it up.
But I, I don't believe it had anything to do with the county.
I don't think there's something, something to do with it. I'm not sure.
There's a process, there's a process of notification whereby they would have to notify the county, but I, I don't, I don't believe, I could be wrong. I don't believe his role was.
I think you, I would take your legal advice.
This is not my legal advice, Andy.
All right, no, here we are.
Here we go.
I have it.
What's the section?
Uh, it, it's in, it's in Chapter 58, Building Construction. We've got a thing called the Vacancy Property Review Committee, 58, Chapter 58, Section 7. The membership of the Vacancy, Vacant Property Review Committee consists of the following persons: One, a member of the board; Two, a representative of the County of Delaware Redevelopment Authority.
There you go.
There you go.
Three, a representative of the Planning Commission, the Township Planning Commission; Four, a representative appointed simply by Township Manager, our Chief Executive Officer of the Township of Haverford, that would be Larry; and the fifth is the representative appointed by us, who's not an elected official. So, this is a five-person board, one of whom is appointed by this board. Um, if Mr. Killian is a member of the Redevelopment Authority, then that's the, that's the capacity.
He was at the time, his appointment, whether he's still, I don't know, but.
Well, and I don't know who.
I would assume, I don't think it even changes.
I don't, I don't believe that we appoint any of these people other than us, other than our own representative from the public and our representative from the board.
I don't believe we do. I don't believe we can.
Just those two.
So, Pat would be there on there. Who would be on their own?
The Chairman of the Vacant is appointed by the President of the Board of Commissioners. Member of the committee shall select for themselves a Vice Chairman, a Secretary, and other officer. They, they serve for five years. Um, so. It only comes up once every five years, which actually makes me think, why do we elect, point me, and why are we pointing another unless we have an unexpired term? Because they should have all staggered off one time, one, one a year.
Yeah, they're all.
Does anybody have the roster in front of them?
Let me look and see.
Where's Lori when we need her? I, I would, I, I would move we table this while we get to the bottom of this.
Motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only other appointments remaining from last week are the Senior Citizens Advisory appointments from the wards one, two, three, and five. Anybody?
No. Yeah, I'm gonna pass on them.
McCloskey, you again?
Uh, I would appoint Pat Hagan to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, do you have any?
I'll have my next one.
Okay. All right. Next is our Police Department Crime Update. Chief Iola.
Crime Report for December 2017. 140 parking tickets were issued, 158 traffic citations, 114 written warnings. Out of burglary, the 1700 block of Arlington Road with no force, a former roommate suspected. The Shogun Restaurant and the Shopping Center on 123, back window was broken, $1,500 in cash. At 400 East Minno Road, forest entry via a kitchen window, jewelry was taken. Theft from vehicles, we had 10 of them, four, three were from the YMCA lot, one was from the LA Fitness Lot, and they were four century, and this is, this is what's called the East Coast Gang. We suspect that all the towns, right up through the Commonwealth and, and the other states are suffering from the same thing. It's an organized group of people who are breaking into cars. They'll drive up next to a car. They know somebody's inside or working out or, or doing business. Pocketbooks were left in the car. They smash the window with a spark plug, uh, because it, it breaks the window very quickly, and, and they grab a purse and credit cards. Credit cards usually used immediately thereafter, then they're discarded. Then they move on to the next town, do the same thing. We had six attempted thefts from vehicles, and they were all unlocked vehicles, and we had seven K-9 usages. Uh, one resulted in a DUI arrest, and two, a burglary alarm over the vacant house, investigate premises, and A O J, Marple Township, for burglary track. My report. Thank you, Chief.
Quick question for the chief. Has the, um, the break-ins of automobiles and residential areas, has that calmed down a bit because of the winter?
Theft vehicles have not.
So, the winter hasn't even, the cold weather hasn't even helped?
Well, it's a little less because it's been so drastically cold, but it's, it's, the numbers were still high. We had 10. Uh, in the, in the past months, they've been up 20, 25, so it has dropped a little bit, but I attribute that to holidays and, and the very, very cold weather. And, and most of it is unlocked cars. And we, this has been going on for three years now, and we, we have arrested many people, but there's always another group that comes up and, and just fills it where they left off. So, they either steal the car, drop the car for the next town, and then, and do the same thing in the next town. So, we're, we're all plagued with it. And that's all because of unlocked cars.
Thank you. Next up is the Township Auditor, Mr. Anderson. Welcome to your first audit review.
All right.
Thank you.
The younger Gary's a lot, Nick. Same height, but, you know, put this in perspective, his, um, I, my kids are the same age as his grandkids. But anyway, I reviewed the most recent credit card statement, disbursements, and expenses. I found no irregularities, and all my questions have sat, been satisfactorily answered.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Next, we'll go for the Citizens Comment. Our registered speaker is not here this evening, uh, so we'll go right to the, yes, we'll go right to the open forum. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the board about any items being considered this evening?
No.
There being none, that concludes our Citizens Forum. Item number eight, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget slash regular meeting minutes of December 11th, 2017.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Corrections? Please call a roll.
Uh, Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarret? Uh, Mr., Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item nine, the warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we approve warrant number one of 2018 totaling $8,233,156.08, comprising the General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 14 of 2017 in the amount of $980,098.36. The General and Sewer Fund payroll for December 28, 2017 in the amount of $679,376.76. The General Fund dispersments, number one of 2018 in the amount of $154,999.16. Sewer Fund dispersments, number one of 2018 in the amount of $4,596,221.10. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment, number one of 2018 in the amount of $91,207.96. Capital Projects Fund dispersment, number one of 2018 in the amount of $1,724,913.56. And the credit card statement, ending December 27th, 2017 in the amount of $6,348.18.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Mr. President, our newly minted Township Auditor has reviewed these warrants. He has, any questions that have, um, been raised by him to the staff of the township have been answered to his satisfaction. He recommends these be approved, as do I, so I recommend my colleagues support my motion.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarret stepped down. Uh, Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 10, Ordinance P-17, 2017.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oliva.
Yeah, I can do it. Uh, motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P-17, 2017, further amending and supplementing Chapter 49, Animals.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. It's a second reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I would ask Mr. Oliva, who now owns this motion since he moved it, to consider revisions to this, um, to this ordinance to increase the amount of buffer zones that we require in properties they're going to, that would host chicken coops. I think it's currently 25 feet.
20.
20.
It's currently 20. I would ask that it be increased to 50. Will Mr. Oliva consider such an amendment?
Uh, no. No, because then, if you can, if you were to increase it to 50, then you're talking about at least 105-foot lot, 105-foot wide lot, which is, which puts everybody, you know, 90% of the people of the township out.
Well, would you consider, what did I say, 50? Would you consider 40, Mr. Oliva? Look, I, I, you know, I've, I've been pretty clear about my opposition to this ordinance. I don't have a problem with the ordinance as was originally drafted, where, uh, properties had to be of some substance, um, before, substantial size before we'd allow chicken coops in them. I made very clear at the times that I was discussing the changes to these ordinances, as did other members of this board, that whatever we do with this ordinance tonight does not mean that some chicken coop destroying, uh, group will come out and, and, and stop anybody who already has existing chickens or coops in their property, but that this would be prospective going forward. Um, I think this is going to allow, um, uh, chicken coops in areas that are far too densely populated for the health, or frankly, just for the well-being of our residents, and I remain opposed to this ordinance as written.
Any other comments?
The ordinance speaks about a licensing fee. Um, is that something that we set in the ordinance itself, or is the township, since it's gonna involve a township employee going out to the home, is there's more involved than a dog license?
That would be set in our fee ordinance.
And there also, it talks about a yearly license. Is that gonna involve a yearly inspection, or?
I think the ordinance is silent on that, Dr. Hart.
I think my recollection of the discussion was it would be inspected upon complaints, but was the.
Yeah.
But I think it also falls under the Health Department, too, so they could have the option of inspecting them. Hopefully that we wouldn't have 200 of these, that they would be just inundate like restaurants where they, they'd have to put them on probably a regular schedule, I would hope, that the Health Department periodically, they check in on restaurants. I think periodically, they would have to check coops out, so.
Yeah, if you look at the ordinance on the third page, it talks about that code enforcement would inspect any structure against which a complaint has been made and issue such order as necessary to count. So, that's how it would be done.
So, this is only gonna be policed if someone complains?
I believe there's an inspection initially, and then it's policed if a complaint. Yes. But can't codes go out at any time and look at it? Do you know?
Yeah, and that's why, that's my comment. I think the Health Department can, yes.
Well, the Health Department, they can go out at any time.
Which is part of codes, you're right.
Well, I, based on what?
Based on a health inspection, just like we do unannounced inspections at restaurants.
Could be an unannounced.
This isn't a restaurant. Let's be really careful here, folks, what we're talking about. I, our Health Department can't just traipse into somebody's backyard unannounced and go look at chicken coops. They can't do that.
If we license them, I don't see why we can't.
I, we don't, we don't let, because it's very different from a business that's open to the public and that kind of stuff. This is, this, this are folks' backyards. We can't, I mean, I, there's, there's more to it than this. I mean, you can't, these folks that don't open their backyard to surprise inspectors.
Joe, you want to suggest?
We wouldn't go into somebody's backyard.
The Mike.
We, we would go on a complaint and knock on their door and then investigate, but we would not go back on these every year and check them unless there is a complaint. We couldn't be walking in people's backyards unless we.
I'm talking about.
What about license?
Knock on the door, and then we'd go back.
How about license renewal? Would you re-inspect?
I don't, I don't know what your ordinance is saying. Is that you want to have license renewal?
Yeah, no, the license, the provision is, in the licensing, is, they must obtain a license, um, and it has to be, the license can't be issued unless they've demonstrated compliance, and then the license is, each is, expires every year. So, the way I read that is there would have to be a re-examine inspection, because you can't issue the license absent compliance, and the license is reissued every year.
Yeah, and you have to be, you have to be careful that, you know, what we're, that they're actually doing something for the license fees, that it's not really just becoming a tax, you know, that there is somebody going out and, and the license fee is, is reasonably related to. Okay, so it would be once a year.
It would be inspected once a year.
Yes. Okay.
All right, there you go.
Well, what, where, I, I, I don't see inspection. It says has demonstrated compliance. Is a person just come in and sign a statement that says, "I'm compliant with 4910"? Or are we requiring our guys to go out and check every one of these out? Which is not clear.
I think, I think if you're issuing licenses, that you would have to go out. You'd have to, you'd have to.
I don't believe you can demonstrate compliance without an inspection.
But I don't know what it means. I, no license should be issued unless the applicant demonstrates compliance. I, that's, that puts the onus on the applicant. I'll walk in and sign a sheet of paper that says I'm fully compliant with Section 4910C, and you'll give me the license.
I don't think that's right. I think it's, if you're saying compliance, you would have to go out and inspect it.
Is there any other ordinance where we have licenses, where people have to go, or the board has to check out, so we can at least compare the language?
Yeah.
Because to me, I read.
Or any rental property.
The applicant has demonstrated license. Not, no license shall be issued unless the coop complies with the maintenance requirements of 4910C, or the township has determined that they're compliant. I read, the license shall not be issued unless the applicant has demonstrated compliance.
On any license, we go out and do a physical inspection to make sure they meet the specifications of the ordinance.
Is that in businesses?
On, off, all sheds, properties, anything there's a permit or a license, we go out and check.
What are, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not being difficult. I, I want to know, I don't know what license, what else we license in this town.
Rental, we have rental property licenses, which we go out and do a physical inspection to make sure they meet the code. Um, there's certain criteria you have to meet to have a rental license, so we check upon renewal. Upon, uh, upon renewal, if you put a new person in there and you have a new lease, we do go out and physically check the property every time that happens.
Right, but for just a rental property that goes to the same person every year, year after year, we don't inspect?
We don't inspect, no.
And they don't have to renew the license?
They do, yes, they do. Every year, they renew the license for a rental license.
And how do they do that?
They go out to paperwork, come in, show us copy of the lease, insurance, and sign people's names that are in there, and then we give them a new license.
And they assure us that they're compliant?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Excellent. Answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Celia.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
No.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarret?
Well, Mr. Connell's sharing my feelings, and I will vote yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
No. The ordinance passes.
Passes, five-four. Congratulations.
Item 11, Ordinance P-3, 2018, Assistant Traffic First Reading.
I, I, if I could, before, before the family leaves, I just want to say, it was impressive advocacy and outstanding, you know, everything. Good government, good participation, good everything. I may not have agreed how this came out, but at the end of the day, uh, this happened in part because of terrific advocacy from this family and terrific advocacy from the neighbors and the friends who supported this. So, uh, please don't think for one second we're not impressed with the effort that undertook, and indeed, it was successful. So, congratulations.
Sorry they forgive you for your vote.
No, I'd say, but that's the way it works.
We appreciate all your hard work and, and time to this, to this subject, so we really appreciate all the time.
And young ladies, thank you, hey. Yep.
The daughters.
You won't have to come back again.
And we're, we're very impressed by the Township Commissioners, because we've been able to see you guys for the last 10 months, really working.
The last 10 months. And if you need, you need any letters signed for civics or merit badges, you just come back to us, we'll make sure you got it, you put in your time. Great effort, young ladies, thank you.
Five-four vote passes, it's nine-nothing.
That's right, that's right. Item 11, Mr. Oliva, I guess it is?
Yeah. Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P.3, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking zones on Tenby Road at Lansdowne, it should be Lansdowne Road, northeast corner.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Dr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler? Yes. Item 12, this is where we, our discussion earlier, ordinance P.4, 2018. Mr. Siegel?
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P.4, 2018, amending and supplementing Chapter 4 of the general laws of the Township of Havertown regarding the membership of advisory boards and commissions and administrative boards and commissions.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. McGary.
Could I just say, though, that I'd like William Penn, the president of the Grange, to be able to come and explain all about the Grange estate because of the fact that it's entirely different from all the other boards.
But this doesn't, this ordinance doesn't cover the Grange.
We're not doing anything with the Grange this evening.
Okay, as long as it doesn't cover.
Is the ice rink, the parks, shade tree, and health expanding all of them to nine members?
Shade tree goes five to seven.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Siegel, would you consider an amendment to your motion to make the Shade Tree Commission seven instead of nine?
Certainly.
Whoever's seconded it.
Then it can be removed, because I believe, let me just double-check, but the Shade Tree, I believe, already is seven.
It's five.
It's five.
It's five.
That shade tree is five.
One suggestion I might offer is, some years, we have an abundance of candidates, and thus the increase there. Would it make sense to put in up to nine on, let's say, a year when there's lanes, you know, seven, if we have seven, we're not forced to add nine unless there's a good volunteer coming up there?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay, we can do up to nine.
We never have to fill a slot with somebody we don't want to fill a slot with.
No, I'm just saying, but if we don't have a candidate, we're not forced to go out and re-advertise and re-advertise, but we can actually appoint up to nine. Let's say the Parks and Rec has seven or eight this year, but there's no other candidate. Rather than have to go back, re-advertise, put burden on the staff, we're authorized up to eight. If we get a volunteer through the year, we could always come back on their new business and appoint somebody to fill an unexpired term. So I'm saying, I'd just like to see the pressure. Some years, we're going to, you know, we're going to have peaks and valleys. Some year, we might have, you know, three people for a slot, and the next year, we might not have anybody for a slot, but the boards, that board or commission is in, is a good membership standing with six or eight people, that we're not under that kind of pressure just to fill it because we've got an open position. Just a suggestion, I'm just...
I totally agree with that.
I appreciate the suggestion. My concern is that it's, it's always up to us as to whether or not we're going to, we're going to, we're going to fill the board to the, to its maximum. My only concern with some of these boards is that they have staggered terms, and you really need to identify a term with a slot. And so saying up to nine could just get, I would prefer that we say it's nine if there are years we don't put nine in. I mean, there's only pressure to fill it if we have eight, and we instruct the, you know, a majority of us instruct the township manager to go find another candidate, right?
So we're not required to advertise if we're short?
There's nothing that requires us to advertise our openings, per se, anyway, other than the resolution, which is just...
Okay, so it's not, doesn't create a burden.
And remember, we're going to mess around with our rules anyway, because of what happened this year. We want to tinker with our, our procedure, right, to address, you know, some of the issues that came up this year.
I wish we didn't tinker anymore.
I was just watching your eye roll, it was awesome.
But at the same point, I don't think there's an obligation to advertise if we don't have nine members, and someone comes along during the year, we can always add a person if the board is short. But I see no reason to just keep sort of serial advertising. That doesn't, that doesn't accomplish anything.
Okay, so to be abundantly clear, the Health Advisory is going to go from seven to nine members, Ice Rink, seven to nine, Parks and Recreation Advisory, seven to nine, Shade Tree Commission, five to seven.
Correct.
Is what we're proposing, okay.
Is this an ordinance or a resolution?
Ordinance, P.4, 2018.
Oh, so this won't be effective tonight?
It will be effective next month, but it will not be effective till 30 days after next month, because our ordinances go into effect 30 days after they're approved, which does mean, for practical purposes, we could appoint someone, but their appointment wouldn't take, go into effect till after the March meeting, because our March meeting is fewer than 30 days after our February meeting. I've checked.
Okay. Why don't you glad we have all these lawyers on this board?
The one that we get through. Actually, I am, I mean, that's...
Any other questions? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Dr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. Item 13.
Oh, Mr. President?
Love it works, go ahead. Mr. Holmes?
Oh, I don't know, I figured it was, that it was finance, but I'll take it.
Mr. McGarry?
I, motion to adopt resolution number 2075, 2018, authorizing the township manager to enter into agreement with mowing, agreement with PennDOT.
Second.
Motion made in second. We have to do this every year?
Yes.
Get ready for the spring?
Mm-hmm.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item number 14, I think we covered in the discussion, is there a motion to table item number 14?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contract awards.
Mr. German?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I'd like to make a motion to award a three-year duty tow contract to both Bob and Joe's Towing located at 1,000 North Eagle Road and K and S Towing located at 1,375 Lawrence Road, Havertown, and a three-year impound yard contract to both Direct Paint Collision located at 1,000 North Eagle Road and Havertown Collision located at 1,375 Lawrence Road.
Second.
Any questions on this?
Yeah. Mr. Gentili, is there, is there a benefit or a reason we do this as a three-year contract?
Comes to recommendation of the police department, I believe.
So is it like a contin, having a continuous process, or is it just...
It's a process we go through every year. When the contracts, we advertise, it's just, it's a much easier process because of impound cars, and we change it every year, and another impound yard gets, we're moving cars and trying to track stuff. So there's a lot involved when we impound the car as far as tracking it, from the legal aspect, is what we have to do with, if it's a police impound or an abandoned car. There's, there's a lot more involved behind the scenes than people realize. So it's cleaner for us, and it, we only have a couple of qualified towers in the township that actually meet the criteria for the ordinance, and these are two of them.
If I can just interrupt for one second. Just for the record, I have placed a recusal statement, I've given it to Mr. Gentili, so I will not participate in this discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. McCloskey, are you, would you, do you want it to be two years instead of three years, or...
No, I, it's, I wasn't expressing a problem, I was just, I was just asking. I was, three years ago, I wasn't on the board, so this is the first time this has come up for me.
Can I interject on that, what you asked, Mr. Viola, Kevin? First of all, in the past, we always haven't had the best of towers. A lot of times, there's a bad accident out there, glass all over the place, after the accident's over, you go back and you check it out, the glass is still there. Here, we have two reputable, good firms that you can count on. They do a great job, and that's, locking them in for three years, if they said six years, I'd vote for them. That's my opinion.
Both of those six years, I might have some more questions, Jim, but I think, I think the chief answered my questions for three.
Any other questions before we vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel, you're...
Recused.
Recused.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Yes. This point is a continuation of the citizens' forum. For any, any non-agenda item or any agenda item, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on anything?
Connor, how about the years of the Grange? You want to talk about it up here?
Any, any new business?
Oh, new business, yeah. Bill, I've received a lot of complaints, and I'm sure all of us have, about what's going on in the township. Ashplin, who's subcontracted by Pico, is cutting down trees, not only on the townships right of way, but on private property. About 20 years ago, I don't think anybody on this board, except maybe Steve was here, 20 years ago, they did this in the 500 block of Brookline Boulevard when Ben Kapushdin was commissioner, and in the 400 block when I was commissioner of the 7th Ward. And basically, what they did then, they didn't cut the trees down, they hacked them, so that when they put that wire in them, they knew they were killing the trees. So then the township eventually would have to go around, because people would call in and say, "My tree out on the right of way is dead." But now, they're cutting them down, and the point is here, is number one, a lot of people are complaining the trees aren't dead, and why don't they just cut the limbs down lower and do it the right way? And number two, why are they going on private property and taking these big giant trees down? And it's on private property, and people are saying they have no right to do that. Now, when we complained, Kapushdin and I, 20 years ago, finally, Pico did go back, and what they did was they had to cut all the trees down that they hatcheted and ruined, and then they replanted all those trees, which I think should go on front yards, not on the right of way, but they replanted all those trees that died because of the job that Ashplin had done. And not blaming Ashplin, they probably told to do it that way, but the point being is these people are all upset about good trees getting cut down.
Jim, I'd like to talk about that, too, and I know you've had it in your ward. We have 90-year-old sycamore trees, which they've tagged in my neighborhood, and, and want to cut these trees down. I've met with Pico, we've talked about these trees, and, and they're going to trim, actually trim these trees now, rather than cut them all down. I think we have to do something as a township to protect these trees, these shade trees. I mean, if you cut down a 90-year-old sycamore tree, it's going to take another 90 years to have a shade tree. So why aren't we doing everything we can to try to save these shade trees and, and not allow Pico to come in and hack? I understand their reasoning, but there's got to be something that we can do, whether we do where, whether they come to us and say, "This is where we need to clear out," and, and we, we do it ourselves. Or we negotiate, we have to sit down and negotiate with them what trees can be trimmed and which one get cut. I know it takes a lot of time, but, I mean, this is, this is getting crazy. They're coming back and just cutting, clear-cutting things in backyards in, in front of the, you know, right in your ward, right in front of...
Grassland Park.
Grassland Park. Sycamore trees, huge sycamore trees that had, that weren't sick at all, they were, they were fine, but they were going to get in the way of the, of the power lines. Does anybody see anything wrong with this? I mean, we, we need to either trim these trees or find a way to get the electricity through here without, you know, I understand some of them have to be trimmed, or some of them are dying, and, and I get it, but in the backyards in Lenark, they cut, they just went in there and just cut everything that they wanted to, because they don't want to trim a tree, they want to just get it out of the way so they don't have to deal with it again.
Well, I agree with what you're saying, Mario, but if Pico's saying they're going to replace or stop doing what they're doing now to your trees down Lenark, I'd like to see them replace every tree that they have taken down. All these neighbors, they didn't want them down. Pico, they have a right to have their wires, we have a right to have our trees.
Exactly.
And they never told anybody, all they did was stick these, these blue ribbons or yellow ribbons all over the trees, and said, "We're coming along and we're doing it." And also, they're putting up new telephone poles, which is fine, I understand they have to do that. Put up your poles, but not take down the trees.
I have the same issue at my ward, about 100 properties are affected, and it is, they do have an easement, Pico does have an easement, and I think under the PUC, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but under the PUC, they have certain authority to do pretty much what they want to do. And what's happened in the past, they, instead of putting the telephone poles in the front yard 50 years ago, everybody wanted them in the backyard. So they put them all in the backyard, and then nobody wanted to look at the trees in the backyards, they planted trees in their backyard, right in, right below the telephone or the tension line, you know, the power lines. So if the tree is right under the, under the wire, then they're going to probably take it down. I have worked with, like you, I've worked with them directly on one, on a one-on-one basis with individual residents to try to get them to do the absolute minimum, and they've been, they've worked with me and the neighbors to do that, but we should, I don't know what their authority is, but don't, don't think they're not without authority to do...
Yeah, they have a lot of authority. I mean, our challenge would be to the PUC, is where we would go, you know, I think otherwise...
I don't think it's a, I mean, I don't think that that's the road we want to take. I don't think we want to, want to get into legal action with them, but just to sit down with Pico and say...
Yeah, we can, we should do that.
Can I, I can certainly invite Pico representative to the next work session, so you can have this discussion, they can answer your questions, that's, would be better to...
Because there are trees, I mean, there are, there are like evergreen trees, things like that, that get into the way, and they cut them down, and, and okay, we will plant another tree somewhere else, or, or in a park somewhere to make up for that tree, and that tree will be back in five years, 10 years, it'll be back. But there are trees that we really need to preserve, and, and 90-year-old and 75-year-old trees, they need to be preserved, and we've got to do everything we can to try to preserve them.
I know, on the township's behalf, we, it's been 10 years, we have stopped a poor practice that was years and years ago, but it makes no sense. I mean, I can tell you, on my street, before I became the township manager, they planted 17 trees right on the dog walker, the right of way, that's actually now, I'm going to, I have to, I have to take these trees down.
Right.
Because they're obstructing, they're literally in the lines, there's no way to trim these, it's a specific type of tree. So we, part of our tree program, we go out and offer the residents, once we take these trees down, if they allow us, we can, we can plant them on their, on their property, you're aware of that, but, you know, we can, you can talk about this all night, I think it is important that you have Pico here at the work session. I will not be at the next work session, Lori will be covering me in the February meeting, but I'll make sure that Pico representative is here.
Thank you very much.
Well, also, what I want to know is, where they take a tree down in the dog walk, now they took the tree down, and basically, they didn't ask the neighbor, they told the neighbor, and if, what happens to their stump? Now, is that on the neighbor?
Yes.
It shouldn't be. They didn't authorize it, I mean, I understand.
Well, honestly, if you, if you look, if they, once you have Pico here, they'll actually even tell you, they don't even have to remove the debris if they don't want to.
They don't, they don't. The PUC, they've got broad authority under the PUC.
Because it's the property owner, you remember, the people own from the curb in, so they actually own that.
Yeah.
You see, there's no difference than a, a tree that's, that's on private property that falls into our roadway. We, as a courtesy, we remove the tree on, on the, on the roadway, but we don't remove the stump or anything of that nature, and Pico's going to follow the same guidelines. But I, I don't want to, I definitely don't want to speak on behalf of Pico. I think we definitely have at least one, if not two, of their representatives, I'll make sure they're here at the February meeting.
That'd be fantastic. That'd be fantastic. I think that to get, we can work out a plan on how, how these things are gonna happen and, and figure out like, it will, you know, figure out what trees are going on, maybe have somebody from the shade tree go over there and say, okay, this tree's good, you can take this tree down, this tree we really need to save. So those type of things, and then when we replant those trees, we're replanting them in front lawns where again, they're not gonna have a problem fifty years from now, which is what I think they're, you know, ten or fifteen years from now worried about another tree back in, into those lines. So, but make sure that we're replacing those trees that do need to come out.
Larry, in terms of the, the replacement, I know you previously said Pico would, would pay essentially to have any tree they took down to have another one put up and like, we were talking about Grassland Park.
Yeah.
With that process, do you see us planting the trees and then reimbursing us or how, how do you foresee that happening?
That's what we've done in the, in the, in the past and it actually works a little bit better. We haven't had any concrete written from Pico, but that's the, the practice that we like, we actually do that and even now with contractors, they'll actually give us a check, we purchase the trees and then we can add, add those locations into our, our pretenders program. Now, just to...
And you put them on private property?
Yes, as long as the property owner will then take ownership of that tree.
Yeah, okay. But there's places in which we have right of ways where, where those trees...
Yeah, and some of our parks and things of that nature, certainly.
Right. But, but you know, to Mario's point, I think it is, it is important to sort of map out where we're gonna put those trees because Jimmy talked about the four and five hundred block of Brookline and, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't on the board then, but I, the trees have not come back because we, we put them in that dog walk. They were there for a few years and then they had to come down, so, you know, I think that's, that's, that's something we want to spell out and we want to get right.
Thank you, Mr. McGary. Bringing that up. Any other new business? Other business? Mr. D'Amelio?
Just that my thoughts and prayers are with the fallen firefighter. I viewed many stories about him, I didn't know him personally, but from what I saw Tom Faran, Bill, on the news and he spoke very well of Lieutenant. So my thoughts and prayers with him. The other thing I want to say is Public Works is just doing again a fantastic job with the streets. So I want to thank all of our Public Works staff because we had some, we had that bad storm and they're out there tonight trying to keep us safe, so thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to reiterate about Public Works, what a fantastic job they have done. We've had, I know because I, the, the water company has had a lot of main breaks in the last, in the last three weeks. I've had my children at home and my wife has been at work all the, the last couple of weeks because of all of these main breaks. It's something like they've never seen before because the temperature has been so cold for so long and, and we've had such mild winters the last couple of years. So please be patient with, with this stuff. We've had intersections that are flooded and, and icing and stuff like that. Just call as soon as you can, as soon as you see an issue and we'll, we'll take care of it, but be patient with, with Public Works because they, they're dealing with, this, this isn't really our issue, the water is Aquas issue and, and so we have to deal with, you know, the freezing of the roads, things like that because of these issues. So, so be careful and, and patient if you can. Also, the tenth annual Scout Saturday is at this, at the Reserve on January twenty-seventh from twelve to two. All Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts and Brownies and their families are welcome to free hot dogs and hot chocolate this Saturday and I want to remind everyone that today is Elvis's eighty-third birthday. He would have been eighty-three. So, there you go. I remember when he, when he passed away, sad day.
I think Jimmy remembers his birth.
I was around and...
Jimmy was in the bathroom.
I went to the piero.
What are you doing, Elvis?
Mr. McCloskey?
Yeah, just briefly, wish everybody a happy new year and, you know, with the storms, again, you know, Public Works is doing a great job, but, you know, we all have to, we all have to exhibit patience. I know, I'm sure everybody has gotten a caller too about shoveling and issues with neighbors, so, you know, we're all trying to dig out, we've all been cooped up by cold and snow. So just try to be, try to be patient and try to be kind to your neighbors during this winter season. And that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Siegel?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
I just want to give a shout out to, to our crossing guards who have been sitting outside for about ninety minutes on what must be five or six of the coldest mornings that I can remember in my lifetime. I've lived here in Philly now for thirty years and I woke my son yesterday morning and said, I want you to see something that you've never seen before in your life and the temperature in my backyard was negative two. And I walked up the street and there was John sitting with his stop sign and helping kids cross the street. So a lot of folks pulling, you know, putting in extra duty and doing a lot, but the unsung heroes of this cold snap have been our crossing guards who, who are out there every single day and braving some of the worst weather I can ever recall. So thank you to all of them for looking out for our children and for going the extra mile. That's all I have.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Can I add something to that?
Sure.
We're gonna put a letter, attach in our paycheck thanking them for the service during this cold snap from the Commissioners and from the Police Department.
Oh, great. Thanks for that.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two issues I'd like the board to think about and maybe we could take it up at future work sessions. The first one has to, relates to the leaf collection program and Larry and I have had a conversation about this. You know, the, and, and the Public Works Department does a fabulous job and that's a very difficult program to implement and they executed on it perfectly. The, the problem is that the leaves, when we pick up the leaves, the first week, it's too early, most of the leaves haven't fallen, then we have a lot of leaves that haven't fallen by the last collection. And then you add the fact, the, the weather in there where it snows and all of a sudden you have a situation where a lot of leaves aren't collected. And so I had suggested to Larry that we consider maybe starting the program a little bit later and, and having the program go a little longer if possible, then if we have a situation where there's a storm, a snowstorm of some sort where, and leaves are left behind where we actually have a, a collection in maybe March or April for a week where we make up, just to sweep through the township to get the remaining leaves that haven't been collected. So I just throw that out. Larry and I have talked about it and I think you were, we're gonna talk to Doc and see, see what could be done, but...
Yeah, we, we're, we're in support of it, it's just trying to find the, the proper facility who's willing to take the leaves.
In, in the spring?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there also a way to maybe start a little bit later and go a little longer, assuming the weather cooperates?
Not longer, no.
No longer? Because again, I mean, literally twenty, twenty-five percent of leaves haven't, haven't fallen by, by the last...
Again, the, the issue with going longer is that, number one, is the, the facility to accept the leaves, there's no place to take them.
There's no, there's no alternative?
None, none at this time.
Yeah.
We're doing, we're still doing research.
Yeah, okay, okay. The second issue relates to, first off, I apologize for not being here last week to vote in person. I'd hoped to be, but I had a family commitment where I couldn't be here, but I did read the solicitor's opinion and my view was that I, I could have voted. I decided not to because there were a number of members of this board that dissented. I think, out of respect for that and for their viewpoints, I decided not to vote, but I, I believe I, I could have voted. I think this board ought to have a conversation about that very subject going forward because in this day and age of technology, there's no reason that people can't call in, particularly if you have circumstances that are unforeseen, that you can't call into a meeting or do it via teleconference, whatever, to be able to vote. So I would ask this board to take this issue up at some future meeting and maybe you could weigh in, Jim, with whether that's an ordinance that needs to be passed or what needs to be done to allow us to do that, but I think in this day and age, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous not to be able to participate by phone or teleconference, so.
I totally agree with you.
Yep. So that's my view and I'd like to take it up at a future, Mr. President, I'd like to take it up at a future work, work session.
Technology's changed over the years.
Yeah, there's no reason not.
We can catch up, our rules and regulations can catch up with that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. McGaryty?
Yeah, of course I'm gonna emphasize everything everybody said about Public Works. They've done a fantastic job. They're out there day and night, you know, keeping, taking care of the township and taking care of the residents of the township. And basically, at the same time, I, I want the people to remember that the fire companies in Havertown Township, the five of them, yesterday, and I'll let Mr. Wexler tell you a lot more about this, but Bon Air had their one-hundredth anniversary and there was a mass given at Saint Dodge Church. But the point being is, most of those firemen were there and this is another occasion where they're out, they're doing these type of things, meetings come up, they're out for these meetings. It's not just fires and not just going to the firehouse all the time. It's, it's when they're out there going to all these different meetings that these fellows and girls are doing a fantastic job. And I'm just emphasizing again, if you haven't paid your dues to these fire companies, please think twice about paying because that's what keeps the firehouse going. That helps the firemen, it helps the fire ladies and it's what keeps, and it's the fact that you, the community, is backing the fire company by doing what you're doing. So that's all I ask, is please think about the dues drive and paying for the different dues because if you have a fire at two in the morning with this weather out there now, there's nobody even wants to go out and get their newspaper, much less go out and fight a fire. So they're out there, they're out there for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Just have a few things. I wanted to echo the sentiments of last month's board meeting, recognizing Chris Connell's long history of dedication to the, our community, both through his service to the board and to the numerous other volunteer efforts that he partakes in, in Havertown. I also wanted to thank him, he took time out a week before Christmas to meet with me for a number of hours to make our transition as easily as possible. And Chris planned to be here tonight to speak in favor of the chickens, this was a big issue for him and he was ill, but couldn't make it, but I'm sure he's happy with the result.